Callers, be in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation to follow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Good Art?
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Nistrovich?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. We move on to approval of minutes for the joint meeting of the City Council, the TIPA, and EDC on July 24th. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Most been made in support. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Be you not, all in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have the regular meeting minutes of the City Council from August 5th. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Let me move on to audience comments. On any non-agenda items, we would ask that you would come up, state your name and your address to the clerk for the record. Is there anybody I'd like to address?
Not on.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Coburn. I live at 69871 Stone Street in Richmond, in the city. And my issue is a fence. Now, I realize that the people had to get a permit, but according to the rules and regulations, in order for a fence to be put on a property line, they would have to have my consent in writing when they applied for the permit. This was not done, and the fence is on my property. I do have some pictures that I can show City Council. They put it right up, maybe if I pass these down.
Have you met with the administration yet on this issue?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
A letter was sent, but it was, the wrong address was put on there. I don't know if they received the letter or not. I was told that, the city lawyer said that nothing can be done. However, if I have to pay for it, I think they should have to pay for it, for the survey to be done.
For land survey?
To prove that it's their property. For, I've lived in this house for 18 years. One of the city workers lived there. He planted trees, and his, he planted them up to the property line. And clearly, these people knew when they were putting, well, when they decided they wanted to put a fence up, they asked where the property line was. They had known all along. They had little trees planted on the property that they put in themselves. They've now moved those trees right up next to my garage. They're using my garage as part of their enclosure. Their fence comes up to my garage and takes off from the back of my garage. They're using the side of my garage as their property line. I don't think they applied for that because what they stated in their application, the drawing that they stated, was that they were going to put the fence adjacent to the property line. Now, if you look up adjacent in the dictionary, it does not say over. And clearly, that's what they have done. And, I don't know, in order for me to take them to court, which I really don't like to take people to court, I don't want to take them to court. They're a young couple. My husband and I are living on only social security. We really can't afford over $1,000 for a survey. And I've already contacted the lawyer. In order to have a lawyer do anything, I have to pay him $1,700 upfront to prove it's my property. And that, and then it's $200 an hour for every hour. I don't think that's fair. And, I don't know. I think the city should be able to do something more because it is in their, in the rules, that they had to have my permission. And even if that, they thought that was the boundary line, which they clearly knew ahead of time, but now they're claiming they didn't know, they didn't want to deal with tree root issues. They didn't want to deal with concrete that was under, next to a slab under the ground. They didn't want to have to do all that digging. So instead, they took my property. And their response when I mentioned it to them was, "The city gave us the permit, now you deal with the city."
This is more of an administrative thing. I asked the city manager, you're aware of what's going on here?
Yes, he is.
I am.
Let the city manager speak.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have met with the Coburns quite a few times. I've explained to them that although I sympathize that, you know, maybe the neighbor put the fence in the wrong place, I don't know that until the city has a survey. It's not the city's responsibility to get the survey done. I have, the city planner did send a letter. Unfortunately, we put the wrong address when we mailed it out. But we sent the neighbor a letter saying, "We've been notified by your adjacent neighbor that they think the fence is in the wrong place. Would you please have your, we request that you have your property surveyed." We can't force them to. It's ultimately a property owner dispute between the two neighbors and a civil matter between them. I've sent.
So you, let me make that clear. You have sent a letter from the city of Richmond requesting, basically, proof that they are not?
Right, right. Unfortunately, and Ms. Coburn just made me aware of the fact tonight, they noticed that the address, instead of saying Madison, it said Stone. This is, the property's at the corner of Madison and Stone. The Coburns live at Stone, so.
Okay.
Just honest mistake. When on our part, we put the wrong address. I've sent the photos, the letter, and everything to Rex, asking if the city should be doing anything more. And the city attorney's recommendation is no. This is, ultimately, comes down to.
Civil matter.
A civil matter between the two property owners. And I did go out and meet with the Coburns at their home to explain that.
And historically, when you started talking about fence, I knew what our answer was. Historically, we are not liable, the city's not liable.
Right.
For your property lines to determine where they are.
Can the permit be denied because, or the fence be, I don't know, supposedly, it was inspected. One piece of it already fell down in my backyard, and it laid there for three or four days. It says in here, "Written consent shall be filed with the application for a permit for them to even put it on what they thought was our property line." There was no written consent.
We, we don't know where your property line is. That's not our responsibility. Somebody has to determine where that line is. If there were stakes in the ground, and they did that, I would assume that we would go back and say, "Hey, you put it right there, you didn't get permission. Now what are we gonna do? Now we have something to go by." But being, nobody knows where the actual line is. You are assuming where your line is. You don't have stakes.
I don't have stakes now, no. That, I mean, when the house was sold, and it's, there's been three different sales on that house since we've been there. We were there for one of the surveys, and they did tell us where. And.
You know.
That, that worked for everybody, yes.
Yep. But it is not the city's responsibility to take your word that those stakes were right there.
Right.
And that is on, we can't, we can't do that. And our, he's, I think he's gone way beyond. He is contacting our authority.
I know. I appreciate everything he's done. Don't get me wrong. I just think that the way this is written, because anybody now can, anybody in Richmond can say, "Okay, well, you know what, they're senior citizens, they're old, they're gonna die pretty soon, they both have health problems, we'll just take their land." And Richmond's gonna let them get away with it.
Richmond doesn't have the legal, what I want to say, the legal whereabouts to do anything about it. Because we are not into land surveying. We do not do.
No, no.
That's your responsibility. You come back and show us that you have a certified land survey, and that fence is in the wrong spot. Now, our administrator can go and discuss that with the property owner and come to a.
So if I, if I was to go out and take that fence down on my, what I think is my property myself, would it be their responsibility to prove it?
It's a civil action. That's why we're saying, it's a civil action.
I, no, but I mean, would it be a crime for me to go take part of that fence down?
I would assume it would be.
Yeah.
Because you have to prove, well, you have to prove where it is.
I know. But it, it just doesn't seem right that somebody that has been.
Yeah, I agree with you. But it is a civil action. It's not, we do not have the responsibility, we don't have the authority to go in there and say, "That's where the lot line is," until it's proven beyond a doubt.
And you can't.
Then our ordinance would apply.
Okay.
And also, ultimately, both property owners have the right to get their own survey. And it's going to be a court matter between the two property owners, and the court will decide which survey, if there's discrepancies.
It just, it just doesn't seem fair that, you know, when you're retired and.
Hey, even when you're not retired.
Well, I know, I know.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a point of clarification?
Okay, go right ahead.
No, I wanna just, is your question, and I don't have any information or documents in front of me, the, the permit that we submitted, does it state, and please, if I'm wrong, that you, so you're disputing that you didn't give consent?
Right.
So we gave a permit without consent?
Yes.
We don't know that it's on the property line.
No, regardless.
We're assuming that the, we allow the fence to be placed adjacent to the property line. Like, if this is the property line, as long as your posts are on your side of the property line, you can put it right up tight against the property line.
Without your neighbor's permission.
If you want the post to run straight down the property line, so that theoretically, half the fence is on their side and half is on yours. Because what was happening is we were forcing people, if they couldn't get their neighbor's consent, to build their fences 10 feet off the property line, and then you had a 20-foot spot in between.
Right, for an easement.
Right.
But then shouldn't they have to prove that that was their property to put that there without our consent?
I don't know.
Not if it's adjacent to the property line, and not over the property line.
Can I state my name and address, please? Christina Hahn, 7926 Markle Road, Fairhaven, Michigan, Iro, Michigan, 48023. My question is, when they submitted the permit, and you're not sure where the property line is, how can you not be sure after viewing those photos that it goes right to the edge of my parents' garage?
Well, there's.
Where is the discrepancy?
We don't know that the garage is on their property line. I could take you to places in this city that.
Oh, I know.
Their buildings are not on their property. It's an old town, and we have those issues. We just get along. Now, the problem you have is something that the city can't remedy for you. It is a civil action. We've been through this before with a lot of other parcels. And you need to go and try to remedy this with your neighbor.
Well, they won't remedy it. They've, they've already told us, you know. And, and we now don't have access to the side of our garage.
Well, I'd like to know how they're going to maintain the fence on the side of your garage. From the picture I see, there's no way they can get in between.
They're not. They're not maintaining it. They're cutting right up to their.
But it still goes back to the fact that we have to have a survey before we would ever be able to enter into discussions. But the city manager is trying to get that to.
I know. I know. I realize that, and I appreciate every, every effort he's put in.
Yeah.
It's just that I don't understand how they can be allowed to put it up without having proper, I mean, even where that fence is at.
Evidently, through the years, there must be, I would think, state cases that have developed state statute on how this works. And the city does not have the responsibility to set up those lines. Probably throughout the years, people have gone to court, and it's turned out, this is what the rule is in the state of Michigan. Not, this just isn't Richmond. This is the state of Michigan.
Well, I don't know, because from what the lawyer said, Richmond should have their own rules on these fences being within a, you know, like, three feet in or whatever.
We do have rules. And at one time, we had a rule that made it inside the property by quite a bit.
Right.
It didn't make any sense.
Well, yeah. And see, I have no problem with them having it on, on the property line on their side. That's no problem. But they, they stated to us that they wanted a bigger yard. And I said, "Well, this is the property line, and this is what the property line's always been." Well, they have a dog and a kid, and they didn't want to have to move. They've only lived there two years, but.
In this permit required, Section E, it states, "Where adjoining lot owner's consent in writing to the construction of a fence on a lot line, such written consent shall be filed with the application for a permit." Now, why would that state that if you had, if, what you're stating is accurate? Why would that be inclusive in this, if you're saying it doesn't apply, actually?
It applies if we have a known lot line.
But you said Richmond doesn't have any known lot lines.
Oh, we have to have a survey.
That's not what I said. I said, "In your case, you don't have a known lot line."
Well, we do. They just don't know.
Well, you do in your mind, but it has to be a legal lot line, period. And that's really what this comes down to.
So if I get a survey done to prove legally, what will Richmond help me?
Then we'll go back to the attorney. We will send a different letter and move forward.
That's a different animal. Now, you've got an established lot line. We have ordinances that will protect property owners from what may have happened at your house.
And I would have to also, just preface that with, I would make sure that that's the correct course of action with the city attorney.
Right.
Going forward, can we suggest an idea that maybe they make an amendment to this and ask that the, if an adjoining lot is concerning this issue, then they have a survey? The people who do the fence have a survey in place before they receive the permit?
You certainly can ask that, whether or not that's something the planning commission would want to do, and the city council would want to approve. You think about it, in your case, you know, of course, that would have solved your problem more than likely.
Right.
More than likely, but not for sure unless there's established lines. But what if somebody just wants to put in a 50-foot fence along one side of their property?
Right.
They gotta go get a $500 to $1,200 survey. It all depends on who does your survey for you.
And Mr. Mo.
Now, is that right for the citizens of Richmond that we're gonna force them to do that on their property?
Yes, it is, because it's forcing people who had nothing to do with a fence being constructed.
And that's your opinion, and you have their right to your opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, we can't do any more on that, but I believe the city manager has gone out of his way.
Oh, he has. He has.
And I believe he will continue to follow up on that.
I'm sure he will. I'm sure he will. And I appreciate every minute that he's put into it. And I'm still trying to get a survey done, but there's a backlog of them because of the season.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I would like this fence moved before winter. So.
Can the city request a time constraint on the survey being requested?
We really don't have.
No. Because it depends on the survey.
Okay.
Hopefully, it works out.
I hope so, too.
Yeah.
I mean, we've lived in Richmond for many years, so. Anyway, can I have my pictures back?
Oh, I set them right here.
Mrs. Coburn.
Thank you.
You're gonna, I'll come over and see my fence.
We will.
I hope so. I hope so. We're gonna paint one side for your.
Anybody else like to address city council at this time? We will move on. Adoption of agenda. Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City council, any changes? Most to accept the agenda as presented, be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Mr. City Manager, did we have to add number three?
I apologize. It's on the table in front of you. We do have a lot combination request.
That was going faster.
Mr. and Mrs. Joel.
Item number three?
Yes.
Lot, lot combined request. I believe you emailed that out to the city council ahead of time, so we have the information. Okay. There was a motion to accept the agenda as presented. I would ask the motion maker if he would accept it.
As presented, including the motion that was sitting on the table.
Okay, there was a second to that.
Support.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have a motion for consent agenda. Is there one to be made?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Most been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have three items tonight on the amended agenda. The first one being consideration of approving this special event request for the Richmond-Romeo half marathon. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to give consideration on a request from Macomb County and Hanson's Running Club for the 2013 Romeo to Richmond half marathon and 5K race. This is the fourth year of the event on our portion of the Macomb-Marcher Trail. And the race is being sponsored by Macomb County, and John Crum is here tonight to answer any questions you may have. For the third year in a row, the organizers would like to utilize the city streets to start the 5K. That allows the pack of runners to kind of get a little dispersed before they get onto the trail. I did put a revised 5K route into your packet. The change is that once the runners get to Ridge, when they first come across the Macomb-Marcher Trail, they will get on the trail there, rather than running down Ridge to Low Plank, where they would then be running on a gravel road.
Mr. Crum, would you like to address the city council?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the city manager has stated, this is the fourth year. Over the course of the last three years, we've, we've grown. We anticipate that we're going to grow again in attendees and people that participate in the run. Last year, we had 400 runners in the half marathon and about 170 runners in the 5K, about 600 runners total. Figuring that each person roughly brought about one person, so you had about 1,200 extra people in the town who afterwards did some shopping, maybe some eating at Ken's or wherever, different restaurants. So we're excited about that. Over the course of the last three years, we've made some changes that have, trying to enhance the, the run for both the runners and to improve situations as we cross different jurisdictions. The start is now at the Romeo Trailside Park, which is on Clinton Road in Romeo. So the run is now all on the, on the trail. At first, the first year, we ran across 32 mile and then on to the trail at Romeo, or at, yeah, Romeo Plank. This year, we are starting a new run. It's a relay with two member teams. We've, we've already had about 20 teams sign up for that. So what will happen is, is that two people, each will run half of the marathon. One will run from Romeo to Armada, and then their team member will go from Armada to Richmond. It's kind of the newest event in running that, that people want to participate in. They want to move into the longer distance runs, but not have to do the whole thing. And I can appreciate that as I get older.
We were thinking about maybe we could do the 5K with the seven of us.
Yeah.
Hey, I've done it.
You'd probably do my leg, bud.
Yeah, we could get it down, we could get it down to each property, you know, one person per property.
How about from my bridge to the finish line? I might want to do that.
So. As John indicated, there is a change in the 5K route. We're going to immediately get on the trail, not pass the trail as we have in previous years, and gone down to Low Plank and Armada Ridge and headed north. That change, we believe, will move, move the runners onto the trail and then free up the roads a little quicker in that area of the city. And we've discussed the issues at Low, Low Plank, and even though the runners aren't going down to that intersection, I will make sure the sheriff's car is down at that intersection to control traffic as it heads north towards the trail. So we will have sheriff at the, at that intersection and at the trail as well. So.
Very good. Is there any questions of, Mr. Crum? Is there a motion?
We move to approve the special event application for Macomb County for the Romeo to Richmond half marathon and 5K run on Sunday, September 15th, 2013, and allow the closure of Parker Street from Water to Monroe from 8:30 a.m. and the rest of Parker Street and Ridge Street from 8, 9 a.m. until the runners are on the trail.
Support.
Most been made and support. Any discussion? Certainly, a great event.
Yep.
Really turned, turned around in four years to a huge event. So you guys do an outstanding job, and I know our partner, Rick, is involved at the end, and some other volunteer groups from Richmond are involved. And we just want to see it continue to grow.
Yeah, it's a fun time, and welcome anybody out to just see the runners run. It's, it's an amazing feat to see people come across, you know, 13 miles, and then you wonder why they did it, but.
And that's rain or shine, right?
It's rain or shine, yep.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any other discussion?
Just, I appreciate this. I think in the past, we've done a lot as regards to trying to keep some of those areas open and, you know, move the runners through as far as those streets and not tie that, that neighborhood up too much. So I appreciate what staff continues to try to do the best, and hope we keep up with that, so that people aren't too, it's a great event, but so that the people in that neighborhood aren't too inconvenienced either from the event.
Matter of fact, your old days takes care of that, your back in there.
And I have a question.
And we haven't, we haven't had any problems, so.
That's what I mean. I think, you know, in the past, we've, we had some, some of the layouts in the past that have caused some problems. I'm saying, now, it's continuing to be well. I hope we continue to stay on that.
Jimmy, you had something?
I did. John, is this the first time the sheriff has been there? I don't remember the sheriff being there in the past.
We, the sheriff takes control or is in, in the intersections that are outside of the city limits. Low Plank and Armada Ridge is outside the city limits.
Yeah. We handle the ones inside Grove Street and the trail crossing at Ridge Street. They handle Ridge Road, or.
Low Plank?
Low Plank and Ridge.
And further all the rest of them on?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other audience participation on this item? Back to the table.
Is, are we doing as far as other groups jumping on? Is that we continue to try, we have all these people in town and trying to muster them into town to continue to do business while they're here?
Are you asking if the chamber has gotten involved?
Yeah.
Or anything like that?
The first year they were, and since then, they haven't been. Our, Tracy Morrow, one of the race coordinators, continually goes out and pounds the pavement here in Richmond, trying to get more involvement.
Okay.
And there's gonna be another mailing going out to a lot of the local civic organizations and things. We're having, it's been more difficult to find people to man the water stations along the route, and so they're kind of targeting, you know, like Lions Club does the water station at roughly Low Plank.
Okay.
And so it's easier, rather than to try and get four different volunteers that don't know each other, to try and get a group to cover one water station. So we're, we're really gonna be sending out shortly some, some letters in that regard.
Okay.
Anything else? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you, John. We move on to item number two, consideration of approving Resolution Number 2013-11, a request to be recognized as a nonprofit organization for the Richmond Sports Boosters. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request from the Richmond Athletic Boosters for the approval of a Resolution 2013-11, recognizing them as a nonprofit organization operating within the city. The Athletic Boosters need to apply to the state for a charitable gaming license for such activities as the 50/50 drawings during football games. And Margot Van Hoeve and Denise Van den Bush are here tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Ladies, any comments? Tell us what you're doing.
She didn't tell me I had to speak.
I think that there's a letter that was sent out that explained how over the years, boosters' role within the school has evolved from being the main breadwinners to being, just providing what we can with whatever we take in through the concession stand. And that's wonderful, but you can only charge so much for a hot dog before, at one point, people start kind of asking for our dollar menu. Anyhow, we decided a few years ago to investigate the possibility of getting a 501(c)(3) license so that we could take up one of those poker nights at one of those, you know, the charitable gaming. It's a huge opportunity. I know that the choir at the high school has done it. I know that the band has done it at the high school. Other sports groups have done it. The Athletic Boosters would just like to be able to do more for all of our athletes and not just one specific team, say the cheerleaders or the football team. We would like to be able to provide more in the way of all of our athletes. Listening to this run spiel, it touches, touches a part of me because my son participated in cross country for four years. Loved it, great sport, was such a terrific opportunity for him, and it's probably one of the most underappreciated groups in the high school. These kids are. These kids are running miles and miles by choice, you know? I wouldn't do it. I couldn't do it. And these kids are doing it, and they're having fun. There's no busing for them. There's no money for uniforms for them. There's no money for, um, the track team. For example, this past year, we had a busing issue, and the track team was not allowed to participate in Saturday meets, because there was no way to get the pole vault equipment to the track meets, unless it was by personal car. And I don't know many of us that have a vehicle that will accommodate that pole vault. So, for some of these kids, these things didn't happen. Athletic Boosters would like to be able to say, we have so much money right now, we'd like to cut you a chalk to cover the busing, so that there's no sports, there's no event that you can't provide a bus for. We'd like to be able to buy equipment. We'd like to be able to purchase more than what we're able to provide just by utilizing the concession stand as our main source of income. So, that's why we're asking for consideration from the council. It's a long, long process, way more involved than we thought. Margot has been working very, very hard, and we appreciate you getting us in so quickly to hopefully recognize us as a civic organization.
Very good. Are there any questions?
This is a fantastic idea. You guys will be able to mobilize in a way by becoming a nonprofit organization that you've never done before, and it opens up so many opportunities for fundraising, and this is, again, just a fantastic idea. I really appreciate that you're doing it, and I would gladly support a resolution to recognize you as a nonprofit organization.
Well, we have, and I must add, and Mr. LaFleur has been awesome to us. With the addition of the new concessions building, we've been spending money left and right and paying taxes on a lot of those items, because we don't have our own tax ID number. And the Richmond Alumni Wrestling Association has been fantastic in helping us out where they've been able to, just so that we can get our refrigerators and our coffee makers and all that purchased without the tax, so... We would appreciate anything you could do for us.
Anything else from the table? Anything else from the audience? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion?
We need a motion.
I'm sorry, we haven't even got there. I just looked at my papers like I hadn't written yet. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2013-11, which recognizes the Richmond Athletic Boosters as a nonprofit organization operating in the city of Richmond.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, I have that backwards.
I think of any group in the city of Richmond that is needing this tax ID number is this group right here that benefits all the groups, and I think it'll be great for them to have this in place.
Like you said, it's a step in a long journey to get you there. It is true what Jamie said, it will open up some doors that were closed before. It just adds also some work for your treasure.
That's not my job.
You're VP now instead of president. Very good. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Good luck. The final item, item number three, is the lot combine request. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider a lot combination request from Mr. and Mrs. Joel Rosensky, who own two parcels on Arbor Court. One is a residence, and the other is a vacant lot that they recently purchased. Their request is to recombine the two parcels so they can build a detached garage in the current vacant lot.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the lot combine request from Mr. and Mrs. Joel Rosensky for The lot combined will take place after all 2013 taxes have been paid in preparation for the 2014 assessment rule. Subject, and you guys, I'm adding something, subject to the following condition, the applicant shall extend the sidewalk across the remainder of the property.
Sir, support?
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion.
The reason why I made that motion specifically is, this is a subdivision that is intended to be walkable, and it already is very choppy in that area, and if we don't put that out, it's not required that they continue the sidewalk in. So, then walking around the court or utilizing the court as a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood, I think that would hinder it. That's why I made the suggestion.
Any other discussion?
What pushes the other homeowners to put the sidewalk in? I see only ones with structures.
This is kind of a new phenomenon that we're dealing with, as property values lowered, people then bought the parcel next to them, and we never had an ordinance that really dealt with it. And so, you'll notice that those others are vacant parcels. Some are owned by adjacent property owners, or some are just vacant parcels. And the property owner is here tonight in the audience, I believe, but we don't have a good way of dealing with that, and then ultimately, you end up with a gap in the sidewalk.
Our ordinance reads something to the order of, when a house is built, part of the site plan is the sidewalk.
Yeah, and so, for instance...
What about the accessory building that he's going to be putting? Is that considered a building that a sidewalk is going to be mandated?
Well, now, it'd be one parcel, and so, the house is already built. I don't, without looking, and Jamie just let me know tonight on this, I don't know if the ordinance is specific to house, or if that includes outbuildings, you know? So, I don't know off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I do know that there's been other parcels where this has been a problem.
Maybe someone could put out a future agenda on the planning commission.
Yep, right. And the corner house to the north that the new home is going up, they're building the sidewalks at the time they're building the house.
It's...
Answer your question, John. Jamie?
Well, it's a beautiful neighborhood, and you do a beautiful job at taking care of your home, so I, please don't feel that I'm singling you out in this. I love walking this area, and I know there is one, a house further down, that they, the lot is purchased in riding your bike or walking. It's, you're walking on gravel dirt, so... We've designed our town in a way that we want sidewalks in communities like this, so that's why I put the provision in.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, have a question then. I know we haven't been doing the sidewalk improvement program for a few years now, when we had, I think, what did we get, the 12 or 11, something like that? And when we were doing that, I thought the arrangement was kind of, it was a joint venture between the property owner and the city as far as payment. It was like 50 percent. So, I don't know if we'd be looking at something like that, since we've done it to other neighborhoods? What do you know, what the administration thinks about that?
I think due to lack of monies, we kind of put it in hold. That's why we did that.
And this is a newer subdivision. That was a program where we went in and where houses were existing for 30, 40, 80 years. We were forcing them to put sidewalk in front of a house that already existed, where the ordinance wasn't ever going to click in again.
But it is an issue. There's no doubt about that. As you said, as the properties have declined in value, they become affordable, so you can have a bigger lot and still live in the city limits and have a bigger lot. The problem it creates is, our ordinance may not cover the fact that you don't have to put a sidewalk there. So, that's definitely something we should put on a future planning commission. A near-future planning commission, hopefully, Mr. Planner? So, we can take a look at that. The only other thing, the negative side to this is, is certainly, a nice garage will be an enhancement to the property, but when we set these up, we also look at, okay, there's going to be X amount of houses in there that's going to, you know, you're going to lose quite a bit of money on this lot, because there's not going to be a home on it. And we all know it takes money to run the city. So, it is nice that the property owner is now going to have a nice big piece of property that he can stretch out on, but it also takes away from the future tax capability of that property. So, that's something that definitely needs to be considered. Any other discussion?
Joel, are you planning on a driveway going back to the building? Not sure?
I'm going to have a 24-foot cement approach, and that's going to take me out to where that sidewalk, if you're talking. I was going to burn it up, plant plenty of trees, but whatever we need to do to make that, I'll do it.
Anything else? Any audience participation on this item? Did I not have a motion again?
No, I needed it.
I just didn't write down the names this time. It's too close to good old days here. Okay. Is there any other discussion at the table?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have agreed, we need to go down this road and clean up the ordinance if we need to. I see the point in addressing it now, as opposed to coming back in a few years and having a reason to have to do a swipe, which is going back and doing these properties that weren't addressed originally. And then often, after some type of improvement's been made, and then we end up asking them to remove trees or berms or whatever later on. So, it seems like this would be the appropriate time to address it than to come back around. I mean, in the past, we did it through the swipe to 50/50, which I struggle with now, but because, again, we were going back and adjusting somebody's property that it hadn't been dealt with. So, I see the point, and I look forward to seeing a, some corrections in the ordinance to address this potential happening, that we may see more of this occurring. Did we approve, and then I asked, did we approve any other, I'm trying to remember if we've...
Yes, we have.
Similar circumstance?
We...
Yes, we have.
I know we've done some...
Combinations, yes.
I know we've done other combinations, but in the same where there was a sidewalk issue?
That, I don't know. Some of them have been done in private developments that don't, aren't on public streets, and then others, they've bought the lot, but they haven't combined them.
Okay.
So, they're still two separate lots.
So, this is our first hearing?
No, we've had one on my street that there was a lot combination, and we did not require a sidewalk if the street continues further.
Okay. Because I know we've done combinations. I didn't know we had the similar fact pattern.
And this one, this property here, is the same thing. There's no sidewalk required.
Did they combine the lots, though?
I thought, I was, I asked the property owner, I was told, but I have not looked at that.
Because you can also be homestead on both without actually, if you're adjacent to each other, I don't know. So, somewhere, and you're, right, if there's one on your street, then it's true that...
I guess there is one on my street.
Okay. I guess that'd be my question, is that, I know we've done splits and combinations before. I didn't know if we'd have similar fact pattern as this, where we took in a piece that hadn't had a sidewalk, and then combined that.
We will be addressing it as a requested, planning commission will request, or will look into the possibility of adding on to our rules and regulations. Okay, anything else? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Move on to City Manager's comments. Sir?
Just a reminder, this Thursday, I'll be leaving at noon, Thursday afternoon, Monday and Fri-, or Friday and Monday off. D and E were in, they were beginning the restoration work, like South Forest, that area where Miller Pipeline's been doing the work. We also got a mist dig up at the corner of Main and Division for the Hudson Light Pools up there.
Good.
I don't know, when the cars hit them, they damaged the base, and they need to come in. Normally, we don't get mist digs up there, so I'm going to track down why on that. That's all I have.
Very good. We move on to council comments. Michael?
I just want to thank the Athletic Boosters for coming today. They do a lot of great work. I know Denise has been involved in that for 15-plus years or something, so, doing a great job now that we have their concession stand that we, that they had Tifa pay to build. Hopefully, it'll bring even more business into the concession scene.
Very good.
I concur with everything the council and Mr. Robb said. Nothing more?
Yes.
I just wanted to add his comments, that the first football game is the 29th, and hopefully, it's open and going and being utilized as it should, so hopefully, the state gets it, yup.
We had a preliminary inspection from the Alld part this week, and I'll have to come back in and inspect it one more time next week, once the blue is all, it's all red tape and the upper...
Yeah. And it'll be great. It'll be great for the people working inside and taking tickets, and the bathrooms alone will be a plus for everybody, so hopefully, everybody can make it up.
Jeff?
Just two points. I acknowledge everything else. Thank you to Athletic Boosters. In regards to our fence land dispute, I don't in any way want the residents, I think, needs to appreciate that land disputes have gone on for hundreds of years. You know, as an attorney, this goes hundreds of years of fighting over lot lines, so this is nothing new. It's an unfortunate thing whenever it happens, and in fact, they had a very nasty one in Shelby. I think we're watching a township where they actually discussed dismantling a house relating to property line issues. But, I said, I think, I'm very confident that whatever, to what extent the city can assist in this dispute, I think we will. Although, we don't, real little legal authority to step in, but should there be a violation of the permit, I would expect that we'll go forward with that. Secondly, like I say, I was out at the Habitat House doing some work today. I want to thank the, all the volunteers that have come out. They're doing a great job in definitely helping to clean up Richmond. And Jill and Larry Kowinski from the Lions Club communicated that they were very appreciative of the support of the city, particularly John Moore, and said assisting with many of the issues that go in regarding permits to make that happen. Of course, they did say that, you know, the windows did seem to get a little hung up, because John Moore wasn't there. We still hear about the great work that he did, being the greatest window man ever. So, I just wanted to communicate, they did say they were very appreciative of your...
You haven't fallen out of the first two houses.
Yeah, so, you know, there is more windows, if you'd like to make a surprise, you know, make another appearance.
Jamie?
Nothing, except for hope to see you guys register for the race.
Right on. Jimmy?
Let's move to the calendar here. Today being the 19th, we have an EDC meeting at 7:00 this Wednesday, the 21st, right here at City Hall. A week from Wednesday, the 28th, Tifa will be meeting right here at City Hall at 7:00. Labor Day weekend, of course, that Monday, and I believe, yes, the community center will be closed on Friday, the 30th of August. The library will be closed on the 31st of August. And City Hall and the community center and the library will all be closed, of course, on Labor Day. So, the council meeting has been moved to the first Tuesday, rather than the first Monday because of the Labor Day, so we will be meeting at 7:00 on September 3rd, but we will be meeting in the schoolhouse at the Historical Society on Park Street at 7:00. Something different. Also, the rec board will be meeting at the community center at 7:00 that same night, September 3rd. Of course, the Richmond Good Old Days Festival will start on the 5th, 6th, and 7th, and end on the 8th, and we hope everybody can come out and enjoy the festivities. Library Board will meet on Monday, the 9th. Cable will meet on Tuesday, the 10th. And Planning Commission will be meeting on the 12th at 7:00. All those meetings are at 7:00. And that would take us into our September 16th for the next scheduled meeting. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar at this time? Okay, we will move on. A motion to go into closed session would be in order.
I'll make the motion to convene into closed session in accordance with Section 8A of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, as amended, for the purpose of considering a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager.
Please add to that at the request of the city manager.
At the request of the city manager.
Thank you. So, I had talked to the city manager earlier about that. I bring it up every year. He changed on his computer now, so next year, we should be fine. But it's a legal, it's a legal point that has to be made. Jimmy, you seconded it?
Yup.
Is there any discussion? I'm going into closed session. Is there any discussion? I'm going into closed session. Roll call?
Green?
Yes.
Lafore?
Yes.
Dostrovich?
Yes.
Bricks?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Yarik?
Yes.
Gudar?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will take a, let's say, let's take a healthy five-minute recess here before we go into closed session. Okay, we will come back into open session. After the closed session, the city council has advised the city manager that his ranking of three point five two on a force scale, which is effective to very effective, was found by the city council as, as a whole. And basically what that says is that John does a darn good job for the city of Richmond again, and we want to keep you, and we hope you stay with us and, you know, help us plan for the future for the city of Richmond. We don't need a motion to adjourn. Be in order.
Make motion to adjourn. Support.
Most made and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.